Welcome to the February ninth, two thousand and nineteen City of Broussard Council Meeting. Please silence your cell phones, and if anyone from the audience would like to make a comment on an item listed on the agenda, please fill out a blue card located in the back of the room and turn it into our city clerk. Each speaker will be given a maximum of five minutes. Please rise for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Councilman Garrett, would you leave us in prayer?
We, the members of the Broussard City Council, beg of thee, Almighty God, to enlighten our minds so that our work will be fit, just, and fair in all things. Give us the courage and strength to fulfill our duties according to the laws of the land and fulfilling also thy holy will on earth and in heaven to Christ our Lord. Amen.
Item three point one, acceptance of the minutes of the January twenty-six, two thousand and twenty-one meeting. Do we have a motion to accept? Is there any public comment?
No public comments.
Council discussion?
District one?
Yes.
District two?
Yes.
District three?
Yes.
District four?
Yes.
District five?
Yes.
District six?
Yay.
At large?
Yay.
Motion carries.
Item three point one, approval of the November two thousand and twenty and December two thousand and twenty financial reports. Do we have a motion to approve?
I move.
Second. Our presenter tonight is our CFO, Mrs. Karen Fontenot. Welcome, Karen.
Hi, guys. In your packets are your November and December financials. Covid put us a little behind, but we're gonna get caught up today. At this point, our sales tax revenues are twenty-seven percent above budget. If they stay that way, that's an extra two point three million dollars in our budget at the end of the year. So I think we're all hoping that trend stays up. Another thing, and I discussed this with the mayor earlier this week, we were contacted by Raymond James. These are the people who are handling our two thousand and twelve bond refunding. They have a new proposal. I reviewed it with the mayor, and I think we like it. It's a total savings of about one point four million dollars. We're basically back to where we started back in February of last year when Covid shut the market down. Sixty-three thousand dollars per year savings, two point eight percent interest on these bonds. So it is my recommendation that we proceed with the refunding. There's no action that needs to be taken on this right now, but next month, I think it's the first meeting in March, we're gonna introduce an ordinance to authorize the sale of these bonds and get that refunding done. So if anyone has any questions for me. That's awesome.
Karen, that's one point four million dollars over the course of a twenty-year bond?
It's twenty years remaining on that bond.
Twenty years remaining.
I didn't think we'd see those savings again, but that's, that would be great. Yeah.
Tina, is there any public comment?
No public comments.
Further council discussion?
Question. District two?
Yes.
District three?
Yes.
District four?
Yes.
District five?
Yes.
District six?
Yay.
At large? District one?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Item four point one, ordinance number two-one dash six-seven-seven, an ordinance amending the two thousand and twenty, two thousand and twenty-one budget of revenues and expenditures up to fourteen thousand dollars for the Main Street parking improvements and approving change order number one for Elliott Construction. Do we have a motion to introduce?
Make a motion.
Second.
Our presenter tonight is our Director of Public Works, Mr. Mel Bertrand. Welcome, Mel.
Good evening, everyone. We're here to ask that you approve the fourteen thousand dollar budget amendment, which includes a change order for seven thousand, six hundred and thirty-three dollars and twenty cents, which was additional asphalt that we used on the parking lot because during construction we found, for lack of a better term, a bunch of huge boulders slash concrete apparent footings, and one of them looked like a, an old chimney or something from a previous building that nobody knew was there. We pulled those out, which created voids, which created soft spots. We decided to cut cement to see what it did. We did cut the cement, which was a lot cheaper than adding lime. We had a few soft spots that we had to dig up and put black base, which hence caused the additional asphalt. So in order to tighten up that base, we had to put the asphalt to make the parking lot last. So that's what that change order is about. The additional, the remainder of the fourteen thousand was work that we did, the city. We had to purchase culverts and catch basins and fieldcrete for those culverts. We installed striping. We installed parking lot bumpers, all done in-house, but that was the materials that we used to do that. So if anybody has any questions.
Is there any council discussion? Tina, is there any public comment?
No public comments. District three?
Yes.
District four?
Yes.
District five?
Yes.
District six?
Yay.
At large?
Yay.
District one?
Yes.
District two?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you all.
Thank you, Mel. Item five point one, ordinance number two-one-six-seven-five, an ordinance where the City of Broussard Main Street Corridor Overlay District is intended to promote innovative, attractive, and effective use of land to encourage planned development. Do we have a motion to adopt?
I'll second.
So this item was on a recent council meeting and passed for introduction, so tonight is the final adoption of the item. The ordinance itself has been supplied in the packets. Gerald, do you have any comments on the ordinance?
No, this is simply to provide for an amendment to the overall zoning ordinance for the downtown district, which will have some more specific use restrictions and authority. So as you noted, it was adopted, introduced at the last meeting, and it's ready for final adoption.
Thank you, Gerald. I notice Mr. Joseph Marino is here from Du Plan. Is there any specific questions from the council? Tina, do we have any public comment?
No public comments.
Any further council discussion?
Question. District four?
Yes.
District five?
Yes.
District six?
Yay.
At large?
Yay.
District one?
Yes.
District two?
Yes.
District three?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Item six point one, resolution numbers... I'm sorry? Five point two, I apologize. Item five point two, ordinance number two-one dash six-seven-six, an ordinance amending the two thousand and twenty, two thousand and twenty-one operating budget of revenues and expenditures for three hundred and fifty-one thousand dollars for the fiscal year two thousand and twenty, L C D B G Sewer System Improvement Project. Do we have a motion to adopt?
I move.
Karen presented on this item at the last meeting. This is, again, an ordinance to be adopted. This is grant money that we're taking in to rehab a sewer system in Broussard. Karen, do you have any additional comments? Is there any council discussion?
Question.
Is there any public comment before we call for the question?
No public comments.
I believe Councilman Gary.
District five?
Yes.
District six?
Yay.
At large?
Yay.
District one?
Yes.
District two?
Yes.
District three?
Yes.
District four?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Item six point one, resolution number six-five-four dash two-one, a resolution awarding the bid to Allen LeBlanc LLC Construction for the fiscal year two thousand and twenty, L C D B G Sewer System Improvements in the amount of three hundred and fifty thousand, two hundred and fifty-two dollars. Do we have a motion to adopt?
I move. Second.
Our presenter tonight about the project is Mr. Daniel Hutchinson from Como Engineering. Welcome, Daniel.
Good day. On January sixth, we had five bidders bid on the L C G B D project, and Allen LeBlanc was the lowest. This is the project. It's rehabbing the sewer in the old part of town, behind City Hall, pretty much from behind Mel's Station. I think it goes up to the Ridgeview Cooley on the other side of Saint De Porres, around the cemetery and all that, and it even crosses over a section of it to around Tina's house over there. And we're gonna come in and smoke test it. We have this grant, find where we're having infiltration issues, and repair what we can with the money we have budgeted.
Daniel, would you agree that it's, we're having a lot of freshwater intrusion into that older system, and this is an attempt to get it repaired? It's causing us some, when we have heavy rains, it's causing our sewer system pumps to work overtime?
Yeah, we had done some, Mel and them had done some preliminary smoke testing for the grant, and I mean, from the pictures, it looks like there's a house on fire from the smoke coming out the ground. And so I think, and that was only on a small section, so I think once we start looking at the whole section, we'll be able to make a lot of improvements, which will affect our list stations, you know, taking on less water, and our whole system as a whole will improve it.
How do you expect they'd repair the lines? Is it different things? They might change some lines? They might line some lines? Do you have any idea yet until?
I mean, some of the, probably they'll be digging down, finding where there's breaks in the pipes, doing point repairs, which is changing sections of line up to fifteen feet. Anything over fifteen feet, it's gonna be a main line replacement. That'll be the, pretty much a lot of the means of it. Then also maybe lining some manholes, changing out some manhole tops that might have infiltration in them, sealing the tops if somewhere in the ditches to where the water doesn't come in. It's a bunch of items. I mean, we have the whole bid that can show you all the ways we can fix it. We just try to plan. You don't really know until you get in there and start looking at it, so you kind of plan what you can do to fix it every which way.
So a question. With the money we, actually for three fifty, did you feel there'd be any change orders based on what you see? Are y'all?
You go into, you fix what you can until the money runs out. So once we smoke test it, we'll find out where the, where areas are. We'll get with Mel. We'll kind of start tackling it one piece by piece. It costs this to fix this, you know, and you keep a running tally, and it's pretty much, you're just repairing until you, until you run out of money. Try to make the, you know, the services under the ditch will make your biggest improvement. You know, your deep sewer is always gonna leak water, but like if you have a broken service under a ditch or under a cooley, that's gonna be where most of your problems are. Caps in yards, clean out caps off, you know, we got money in there to replace those, and just try to make the biggest bang for the buck.
Like if something's broken in someone's yard, y'all fixing that also? I don't, I don't know.
There's a, with this grant, there's a certain, there's a, there's a certain amount, but it's gotta be into a certain income range to where we can go on their yard, and then we have to be able to get an easement from them.
Since we're dealing with grant money, I mean, there's some very specific rules that we have to operate on, correct? It's restrictive.
Generally, this is one of the very, very, very few grants that you can work on private property. And L C D, this is, goes with the thing you just voted on previous to it. It's grant money from the state. That's federal grant. It's federal money. So they will allow you to do certain things on private property, but it's very structured and strict on what we can and can't do. Generally speaking, Gerald, I'll tell you that, we are not allowed to work on private property. In this instance, and man, there's maybe two or three I can think of, you can actually work on private property, but... Yeah, the whole, that whole area, that's one of the tests. Louisiana Community Development Block Grant is only for areas that meet a certain income level. This is for lower income levels, and you look at the, you look at the whole area, and that area has to meet it. So if there's a particular house, and Richard Menville, this is really more his world than mine, we assess whether or not we can do it. I believe so, and, but Richard's very good at assisting, that's why he's such a good grant coordinator. He'll help you get through that process and make sure we do it correctly. Yeah, well, I mean, he's, part of the grant is actually going to him to handle all of that.
And there was a survey done throughout the area when we applied for the grant. It's been a while, but that was part of the process the city had to go through to walk through. The smoke test was part of identifying that it was an area that needed work. There was surveys, there was some collecting of data from residents saying, yes, we need a sewer improvement. All of that happened way on the front end for us to be eligible, and here we are, sort of at the end of that process, but the beginning of the construction and rehabilitation process.
And these are all federal guidelines. I mean, it's, it's pretty... The block grant program, I gotta, it's, it's hard on us, because there's a lot of paperwork for us, but when we start dealing with an individual, that's why they allow a good chunk of the grant to go to a grant coordinator, because you need somebody like Richard Menville to help us navigate all this and do it properly. So it's not bad the way they do it, it's just, you gotta follow their rules, so...
Just to be clear, the intent of the city is not to go on people's property. We have a whole sewer system that we own at the street level that, that needs repair, but as Ray mentioned, if they identify some problems that could be on private property, there's a mechanism to try to address that. Our contractor is working within our easements, you know, our sewer system.
I guess the better way to put it, Ray, is our contractor's working within the boundaries of that federal grant, and that federal grant has very specific requirements and allows you to do very specific things, and it doesn't allow you to do other things at all. So he, he's working within that program that, this whole, the whole program was designed to, it can only be spent in lower, certain, below a certain income level, and it's designed to kind of bring those types of areas up. So it's a very targeted kind of program, and they're actually pretty effective. They work pretty well. We've done, I've done over the years, a lot of areas that otherwise might have never gotten water or whatever, we, you know, the municipality or the governing body was able to help people because they have money that, that this area qualifies for.
As we go back to what the mayor said, of this grant, three hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars of the, the three hundred and fifty thousand dollars is to be spent on, in, in the right of way, in the utility easement. Only fifteen thousand dollars is to go out onto other people's property. So the chunk of this grant is to fix our system. Not, not for what can go wrong on, not for what can go wrong on a land or a piece of property. It's not, that wouldn't be three homes. I mean, just for the, the bid items, it would do more than that.
Richard Menville could tell you, virtually every city in Louisiana that has an area that qualifies under the grant applies for a project, and, and every year they have a different theme. Some years it's water, some years it's sewer. It can be, they kind of target different things, but there's more cities in Louisiana didn't get a grant at all. This is pretty fierce competition, and it's good. It helps us rehabilitate a part of our system that needs the work.
Tina, is there any public comment?
No public comments.
Any further discussion with Mr. Hutchinson?
District six?
Yay.
At large?
Yay.
District one?
Yes.
District two?
Yes.
District three?
Yes.
District four?
Yes.
District five?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Item six point two, resolution number six-five-six dash two-one, a resolution declaring the asphalt patch overlay Southfield subdivision project as being substantially complete. Do we have a motion to adopt?
I move.
Mr. Hutchinson is also reporting on this project for us.
I'm here to recommend substantial completion for the Southfield Overlay. They overlaid the main road, the main drag going into Southfield, Overbrook, Overbrook Road, and they did all the turnouts. It came in nice. They did the patching and overlay. Mel and I went the road. I think it came out good. There was not any complaints or anything like that, so I think it's good. Contractor's gone. He replaced, I think he had one, he hit one mailbox that he had to replace. The only place it makes him's in Baton Rouge, and it was like a three-week order, but he got that taken care of. But yeah, he's gone, everything's good.
Tina, is there any public comment?
No public comments.
Call for the question.
At large?
Yay.
District one?
Yes.
District two?
Yes.
District three?
Yes.
District four?
Yes.
District five?
Yes.
District six?
Yay.
Motion carries.
Item six point three, resolution number six-five-seven dash two-one, a resolution declaring some police vehicles as salvaged and approved to donating them to the Opelousas City Marshal Service. Do we have a motion to adopt?
I move.
Chief Deku, would you like to comment on the cars you're donating, or requesting the city donate?
These are the cars that were replaced in the current fiscal budget year. There's five, there he is, there's five units that were replaced this budget year. Maybe one of them was from the previous, but Opelousas City Marshal's Office, they just walked in and had sent requests to Tina in reference to seeing if we could donate those vehicles to their office, as they're in dire need of, of some equipment and units in their agency. So I don't know if y'all wanted to allow them to talk. I know they wanted to...
Welcome to our meeting. We're on your item now. If you'd like to address the council, make a comment.
Actually, we just want to say thank you in advance.
Good evening.
Just want to say thank you in advance, and thank you guys for considering donating it to us. We are in desperate need of help or equipment, and we reached out to Chief, and Chief, he was kind enough to us, and we thank you for just considering this once again. Thank you all. Yes, sir.
I think Tina has all the specs in the... She has all the specifications. I think it's an ordinance on vehicle types and mileage, et cetera.
It is, chief. I'm looking at it here. Five vehicles. Is there any further public comment?
No public comment.
Council discussion?
Question.
District one?
Yes.
District two?
Yes.
District three?
Yes.
District four?
Yes.
District five?
Yes.
District six?
Yay.
At large?
Yay.
Motion carries.
Well, we're happy to be of help to you and of service. Hopefully, it'll, it'll help your department. Thank you for coming out tonight and addressing the council. Item six point four, resolution number six-five-eight dash two-one, a resolution approving the change order for South Bernard Phase Two project to perform some drainage work that is part of the Main Street Phase One project. Do we have a motion to adopt?
Make a motion.
I'll second.
Mr. Walter Como is going to present on this item for us tonight.
So this, what we're presenting to y'all tonight is, we are currently, I don't know if you noticed, we finally got our DOTD permit, and the contractor's working in the area of the intersection of Main and South Bernard. So a couple of things. DDG is, is on February twenty-eighth, is opening bids for Main Street Phase One. Part of their project has some drainage that crosses Main Street. One of them is a, is just a cross drain. The other one is the box culvert near the Village of Broussard. What's the size of that thing, Philip? So it's two four by four, it's a double barrel box culvert, four feet by four feet, substantial. That's gonna help drainage quite a bit. What we didn't want to happen was that we finished the work, brand-new paving on, on the intersection, because the flares of the intersection are gonna go from the intersection of Bernard and Main all the way to that culvert. On the opposite side, they're gonna go from the intersection, pass the first road into Holiday Gardens. It's a good ways. Well, what we didn't want to do is build a brand-new, pretty road and then cut it open to put drainage in. So what we're doing tonight, it's still DDG's project, we're just gonna build it in this project, so which will require us to change order, the South Bernard project to add in a box culvert and a culvert crossing. It's only two, right? Yeah. So essentially, we're gonna be putting in the box culvert and that cross drain for the Main Street project. And my understanding, talking to Karen, is that the money's already in the budget and it's just kind of shifting from one contractor to another. I guess would be a decent way to put it. So that's all this is. We're just informing y'all. David asked me before the meeting, there will be another change order for the intersection itself. I think Daniel's trying to get his final numbers together, because if you remember, and I told you all this before, that intersection was never contemplated as part of South Bernard. It was either gonna be in the Main Street project or the Bernard Road project from Main to Ninety. We got there first, and you can't just build a project and stop. So we're adding, we're gonna have to add in more asphalt drainage, et cetera, et cetera. And as soon as Daniel puts all that together, we'll, we'll come back to y'all to fund that. But that actually, the, the work on the intersection was actually already kind of included in two other projects, so we're just doing it in this one, so...
So Walter, just to be clear, there's no budget amendment tonight?
No budget amendment tonight.
Both projects that you referred to are funded.
That is correct.
But some drainage work, two, two spots are just being handled in the Bernard Road project as part of that project and not in the Phase One project.
And, and DDG was gracious enough to work with us to make all this happen, so I, I think they're gonna set some grade and stuff, and we'll kind of work with them to get it all done.
And the real reasoning for doing it now is because once the intersection is complete, we'd be opening a road we just built to do drainage work. It just doesn't make any sense to do that, close a road twice, so logically, I just wanted to hit the high points.
Government's logical every once in a while, and this is one of, we don't want to cut open a brand-new road. That just, that goes against the grain.
Is there any public comment, Tina?
No public comments.
Questions from the council discussion?
Question.
District two?
Yes.
District three?
Yes.
District four?
Yes.
District five?
Yes.
District six?
Yay.
At large?
Yay.
District one?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Item seven point one, a meeting adjournment. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
Make a motion.
District three?
Yes.
District four?
Yes.
District... District five?
Yes.
District six?
Yay.
At large?
Yay.
District one?
Yes.
District two?
Yes.
Motion carries. Meeting adjourned.
Thank you all for being here tonight. Please travel safely. Meeting adjourned.